I mean, at twenty-eight, the last letter to Guam is called to order. For the prayer, I would like to invite Imam Khalid Khan from the Ahmadiya Muslim community to lead us in prayer. Please rise.
The God of Moses, Jesus, and Mohammed, peace be upon all of them. The God whose most gracious, the merciful. Assalamu alaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuhu. May the peace and blessings of God Almighty be upon you all. I am honored and humbled to stand before you today as a member of the Ahmadiya Muslim community, the Muslims who believe in the Messiah. We join together in prayer before our Creator. All praise belongs to God, Lord of all the worlds, the gracious, the merciful, Master of the Day of Judgment. The alone do we worship, the alone we implore for help. Guide us on the right path, the path of those on whom you have bestowed your blessings, those who have not incurred thy displeasure, and those who have not gone astray. Our Lord, forgive us and make firm our actions and steps, and bestow upon us mercy from thyself, and provide for us guidance in our affairs. O ye who believe, be steadfast in the cause of God, bearing witness in justice, and let not people's hostility incite you to act otherwise than with justice. Be always just; this is near to righteousness. And fear God; surely God is aware of what you do. You are the representatives of the great people of this great island, and you have been entrusted with authority in power of their belief, on behalf. It is your responsibility to follow men and to God that you always keep this in mind and fight for what is right and what is just. I pray that God grants you guidance and strength from himself, so that you may fulfill the duties and obligations that you have been placed upon your shoulders, and so that you may be able to justly discharge of the trust placed upon you. Ameen.
Would Senator Kumitautau lead us in the singing of the national anthem, and Senator Lohan in the Guam hymn? For the unifying, can I ask former Speaker and Senator Turi Stilai to lead us? To express a never-ending and never-forgotten gratitude by the people of Guam, the legislature recognizes recipients of I mila, milazen mastakilo na sacrifisu on a display in the Guam Congress Building and during each of its sessions. For the recognition of the recipient of I milazen mastakilo na sacrifisu, Vice Speaker Allen, you are recognized.
On behalf of the grateful island and country, we honor Sergeant Joseph Martin Istakio and the family of Sergeant Joseph Martin Istakio for making the ultimate sacrifice in service and defense of our island and country.
Thank you. Please be seated. Madam Clerk, please take your call.
Vice Speaker Ada, Senator Barnett, Speaker Blas, Senator Borja, Senator Calvo, Senator Duennius, Senator Kumitautau, Senator Luhon, Senator Munia Barnes, Senator Parkinson, Senator Perez, Senator Solis Matanani, Senator San Augustine, Senator Taidegui, Senator Turlahe. Mr. Speaker, there is a quorum.
Thank you. Majority Leader Senator Lohan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move to approve the Legislative Journal dated July 28, 2025, September 3, 2025, September 5, 2025, and September 10, 2025, subject to corrections.
On the motion to approve the Legislative Journal dated July 28, 2025, September 3, 2025, September 5, 2025, and September 10, 2025, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader Senator Lohan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Mrs. Speaker, there are communications and petitions, and I move that they be appended in today's Session Journal.
On the motion that communications and petitions be appended to today's Session Journal, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader Senator Lohan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Mrs. Speaker, there are messages from the Imaga Hagan Guahan, and I move that they be appended in today's Session Journal.
On the motion that messages from Imaga Hagan Guahan be appended to today's Session Journal, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader Senator Lohan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Mrs. Speaker, there are reports of standing committees, and I move that they be appended in today's Session Journal.
On the motion that reports of standing committees be appended to today's Session Journal, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader Senator Lohan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Mrs. Speaker, there are no reports of select committees.
Thank you. You can proceed.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, I move that, uh, bills introduced, Bill numbers 17638COR, 177-38LS, and 178-38LS, 179-38COR through 190-38COR, and resolutions introduced, Resolution Numbers 8-38COR, 81-38LS through 89-38LS, and 90-38COR through 97-38COR be deemed to have been given its first, uh, reading.
On the motion, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. We are in motions. Majority Leader Senator Lohan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Mrs. Speaker, I move to excuse, of course, I think everybody's here, but, um, uh, Senators that won't be present and legislative session.
On the motion, are there any objections or objection, motion carries? Majority Leader Senator Lohan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Mrs. Speaker, I move that all congratulatory, commendatory, and condolence resolutions introduced today and for the remainder of this legislative session be considered, uh, first read and adopted to allow the Legislative Council to make technical corrections and to add all senators as co-sponsors.
On the motion, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objections, motion carries. Senator Duennius, you are recognized.
Situs Masih, Mr. Speaker, and thank you. Notwithstanding, notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Hagan Guahan, I move to act upon vetoed Bill Number 44-38COR.
On the motion, notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Hagan Guahan, to place vetoed Bill Number 44-38COR in the folding file, are there any objections? Are there any members who would like to speak on the motion?
I would like to open on it, Mr. Chairman.
You can proceed.
Mr. Speaker, you have called us into our regular scheduled session here today, and the first order of business that we will take up is going to be the consideration of the override of the governor's veto of Bill 44-38, otherwise known as our Budget Act. Mr. Speaker, I do not want to belabor any points as we have arduously gone over the budget process and have done our duty, our fiduciary duty, one of only three duties we have in this hall, and that is to pass a budget for the government of Guam and the operations of the government of Guam to serve our people. Just to make a few comments, Mr. Speaker, obviously, we accepted the governor's bill and request. We went through the process of the public hearings and had the agencies come before us. We did the exercise of going in and providing the committee report on the budget. We went into August and deliberated this budget and passed this budget by a margin of 11 to 4, 11 in the affirmative and 4 against. Mr. Speaker, subsequent to that, we were called in to a session after the governor vetoed our measure that was duly passed. This body once again spoke and said that we wanted to stick with the original legislation that we had passed, a balanced budget, a budget that can move forward and keep promises that we have made while keeping operations for our government of Guam robust and moving forward. Mr. Speaker, we are now here on the 29th day of September. We all know what will take place in just a couple of short days, and that will be the beginning of the new fiscal year. Mr. Speaker, I think as a co-equal branch of government, this 38th Guam Legislature has deliberated properly. While this budget is not perfect, it is a product of this body, it is a product of 11 members of this body, the majority of this body, and I believe, Mr. Speaker, it is a product that will suffice in the operations of our government, that will balance our obligations to our private sector and ensure our economy is strong and our government serves well going forward. So with that, Mr. Speaker, I ask my colleagues to please stay steadfast on their votes to override the veto of the governor on Bill 44-38. Situs Masih.
Thank you, Senator Duennius. On the motion, gentlemen from Momototomay, sir, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise in opposition to this veto override. We really need to think about what we are doing here. We are going to be the generation that needs to rebuild a lot of things that are going out in our lifetime. Infrastructure we inherited that is decades old will need to be replaced on our watch. We're already seeing it. Rollback of the business privilege tax from 5 to 4% would shrink government revenue by 40 million in FY 2026 and another 40 million in FY 2027. That $80 million gap is real money. It would force us to either cut programs or borrow heavily. Moody's specifically warned that even with strong revenues, a reduction in any revenue of this size is not a credit positive. In short, the override enacts a major tax cut without a funding plan, undermining our budget immediately. A territory's credit rating reflects how risky lenders perceive Guam's finances. A lower rating means investors demand higher interest on our bonds. Think of it like your personal credit score. A lower score means your bank charges you more on loans. For example, one analysis notes that lower credit ratings imply a higher level of credit risk and consequently higher borrowing cost. In practical terms, if Guam's bond rating slips even a notch, every dollar we borrow from now on will cost more in interest. The revenue hit is an abstract. Beyond our credit ratings and our ability to finance long-term projects, immediately, immediately, our schools, our hospitals, our public safety will feel the loss of this revenue. While we are in the middle of an unprecedented military buildup, we are giving war contractors a 20% cut in their business privilege tax. One-third of our economy comes from the Department of War and their investments in the island. It is madness to hide behind small businesses while we give these massive contractors the same massive cuts that we try to sell as to the lower, lower ends of communities. The long-term fiscal health of our island is being undercut with the short-sighted tax cut for the extremely wealthy. Businesses in the top 1% with tens of millions, hundreds of millions, 200s of millions, 300s of millions, 400s of millions, given a 20% tax cut during a once-in-a-lifetime military buildup. That makes no sense to do. And it is important to note who benefits from this tax cut. Financial officials point out that 87% of Guam's businesses already pay little or no BPT. So when you go down to that market, to down the, in your neighborhood, when you go to that mom and pop that you wanted to support, none of this is going to them. I have consistently opposed this approach. If we need to give aid to businesses, then let's not do it by cutting off our long-term financial revenues. This body has aided the business community in the form of leaps in community power credits, putting more money out there for the consumers to spend, and deregulating red tape wherever we can. This body can help the business community, but we cannot do that if we cut our own legs out from under us. $80 million is real money that we are putting at risk because we want to try to shift monies from other projects to pay for tax cuts that are putting a massive hole in our budget. The original reason these tax cuts, these taxes were put into place in the first place was because of the Trump tax cut, putting a massive hole in our budget. So bad that the governor at the time, the Republican governor at the time, was parking hearsees out at the front of this legislature, saying how much damage would be caused by not raising the revenues. And now those tax cuts that caused that emergent initial emergency where hearsees were parked and threats were made, those tax cuts were made permanent. We now have a permanent hole in our budget that we have been trying to fill, and now we are undercutting that, are undercutting our ability to have this revenue to take care of the big projects, to take care of the small projects, to take care of $80 million worth of problems every year. Every year, we're losing that. The first year, we're losing $40 million. The second year, we've lost 100 and, no, we've lost $20 million by the second year. We are losing so much revenue, and think about all these contracts we see in the newspaper, billions of dollars in investment, and we're giving those Department of War contractors a 20% cut. It does not make sense. We have things to build, we have things to rebuild, we have things to maintain, we have a worldwide shortage of key positions, and we need to raise wages to compete for them, not just in the private sector, but in the public sector as well, all across the board. Guam is in one of the highest cost of living areas in the world, but our pay across the board, across all industries, is on the lower end. It is incredibly difficult to live- It is incredibly difficult to live on Guam, and cutting off the valuable public services that are there to serve the most vulnerable is not the way we close that gap. We are never going to solve our problems on this island with less resources. We need resources, we need revenues, and this is one of the few ways we can collect it. One-third of our economy is from the Department of War. One-third of everything that comes into Guam comes in through defense spending, war spending, preparation for war. We need that revenue. And so I ask my colleagues to reject this veto override, recognize that we have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to take advantage of this military buildup. For decades, I've heard many members of this chamber talk about the benefits of the military buildup to the community, one of those things being taxation. And now, at the height of that buildup, we are cutting taxes for the Department of War? Are you kidding me? Are you kidding me? So let's return to sanity, let's return to some fiscal integrity, and get that eighty-million dollars back and use it at the places in our government that need it the most. With that, Mr. Chair, I ask my colleagues, Mr. Speaker, I ask my colleagues to reject this veto override, and I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. On the motion, on the motion, are there any senators waiting to speak on the motion? General Lady from Tadzonia, you're recognized, ma'am.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Speaker. I also rise in opposition to the override of Bill forty-four because it is not a responsible budget. It leaves us with less revenue and no plan to cover the shortfalls. It creates the federal cuts that have been mandated to critical services and hospital repairs that we heard at the oversight hearing and we have heard for years, are we going to require more than even what we have given them in this budget? And that they are immediately needed. The data from the Department of Revenue and Taxation shows that the bill disproportionately benefits largest businesses, not the smaller ones, that make up most of Guam's economy, and it abruptly reduces the government's ability to care for all of our people's needs in health, education, public safety for the next two years at a minimum. To make up for this loss in revenue, the twenty-six budget forces us to rely on fifty-nine-million dollars in excess revenues from FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six, in upcoming revenues that we're hoping to get, just to maintain and not to improve basic services. And how will we sustain that next year with the additional forty-million dollars in cuts mandated by this bill? Cutting back forty-million in tax revenue today is cutting money that supports immediately and in the future GDOE, a rainy-day fund which we are short, the timely payment of tax refunds. It jeopardizes our credit rating, according to the governor, when we are at a time when we absolutely have to borrow to build a hospital. And in the future, and in the immediate needs, again, of GMH. The CRR in August reported fifty-one million in FY twenty-five surplus revenues. If the budget bill passes, another thirty-four-point-five will be appropriated from the FY twenty-five revenues, leaving the total at sixteen-point-four. But the legislature also passed Bill number one, three-dash-S, in the special session, which appropriates forty-million from the general fund, quote-unquote, to GMH. This means we're over-appropriated. It would be the first unbalanced budget in decades. If we, Mr. Byrne says it's coming from general fund which includes accumulated surpluses that have occurred since twenty-sixteen. If we override this FY twenty-six budget, we start FY twenty-six in the red and short by twenty-four million, jeopardizing even the GMH's receipt of its twenty-six million that has been promised, or sorry, ten million, twenty million that was promised in this for FY twenty-six revenues, future revenue and any other repair. I believe we violate our fiduciary duty to the people of Guam to ensure these critical, critical needs are taken care of first. The budget also ignores a six-point-six million in annual revenue loss from the BPT discount on Medicaid receipts, which this legislature passed through Public Law thirty-eight twenty-seven. That was ignored. And there's the narrative that the majority pushes that says, we have to do this BPT tax cut today despite the federal cuts, despite that it helps the largest of the largest businesses on Guam disproportionately, but they say we're doing this to help struggling businesses stay afloat. But we've seen through our discussions that ninety percent of the businesses on Guam are already at three percent, lower than the percentage mandated in this bill. They are already at three percent. And if we really wanted to help those smaller, struggling businesses that are currently paying five percent, there were several proposals, an excellent one by my colleague, Senator Perez, one that I proposed myself, where we would tier this system so that those true smaller, struggling businesses would be rated under a different cap. For me, it was for two-million dollars, and they would still receive, and they would receive three percent, not four-and-a-half percent, but three percent cuts, a much better benefit to the smaller businesses, but that was rejected. And this four-and-a-half percent rate cut is being applied to the smaller and the businesses making over five-hundred-million dollars. All the same, no distinction. Again, this is at a time when we are facing critical needs, despite all of our efforts in this budget to try to address those, the reality is the critical needs remain, that we haven't been able to, and that if we need to repair the hospital, we also need to build a new one. And we need to maintain our ability to do that. And that's, I'm hoping, going to happen in the next year or two, so that we are moving forward, and we're not putting our patients at higher risk for another year. But we're, I don't understand why we would want to jeopardize our own ability to do that, to fix GMH to the proper electrical panel, not just the pieces, piecemeal that they proposed, but to truly fix it, create the backup. It's going to take us for the five years that they are constructing this new hospital, if it ever gets started. And we haven't even addressed the prison construction, which also was supposed to be done through borrowing. Jeopardizing our credit rating potentially makes our borrowing more expensive, and that doesn't affect anyone in here, it affects future generations, the ones we always talk about. It puts this burden that we wanted to give a benefit, we want it to undercut critical services, and we're going to put that heavier, the more expensive borrowing on the backs of the future, the children, our kids, grandkids, the ones that we came in here and said, we are going to make sure we don't do that again, because so many legislatures did that. So for those reasons, I oppose the override. I think we should get back to the drawing board and just take out all those things that are not sustainable, make sure that we have a plan that addresses our most critical needs, and that we are going to be able to address these for the next year or two. Sisus Massey, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. On the motion, on the motion, are there any senators willing to speak on the motion? General Lady from Baragati, you're recognized, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This FY twenty-twenty-six budget bill is one that prioritized a tax break for the wealthiest at the expense of our community in need of services, and this includes businesses. Although more money was subsequently appropriated through amendments in addition to the supplemental appropriations by the governor, it is likely that the same source of the general fund is used for budget amendments, not only for the hospital, but also for the Simon Sanchez rebuild, rainy-day fund, the Guam Cancer Trust Fund, and others. The budget bill significantly lowers the amount set aside for tax refunds based on historical trends. However, this comes at a time when, with the enactment of the One Big Beautiful Bill Act that also prioritizes the wealthiest by cutting education, social programs, and others, Medicaid, one of the most prominent ones, defunding of the USCPA, partially dismantling or disruption of USDOE and FEMA and the Veterans Affairs in order to pay for tax breaks for billionaires. Although we received preliminary information of defunding in whole part of local agencies or programs during the budget session, what should have transpired was a hard look and investigation of the full impacts of the national budget cuts to Guam before committing to a tax cut equating to approximately eighty-million dollars annually, or accepting a targeted, sustainable tax cut for those businesses in need, as had been proposed by myself and Senator Cholali and others in this floor, but which were rejected by this body. DRT during the Committee of the Whole testified that there would be a reduction in income tax collections due to the provisions of the One Big Beautiful Bill Act, reductions estimated to be at least eight-million dollars at the time. The rollback of the BPT in a budget bill, the loss of income tax revenues due to the defunding of agencies or programs in whole or part due to the One Big Beautiful Bill Act, results in the shrinking of local government coffers that will exacerbate addressing issues that proponents of the bill are likely to, were quick to highlight. There are no guarantees that this money will be reinvested in our island to support a more resilient economy or lower the cost of living by passing on the savings to the consumer, which will drive the demand for more government services. The BPT rollback of eighty-million dollars is an opportunity cost to building the workforce that this economy needs to diversify and to become resilient. The rollback of the BPT may also jeopardize the federal funds, the ARP funds, that is, which is a hundred-four million that is set aside for infrastructure around fifteen, plus even the hundred-and-eight-point-eight million for GDOE to pay for its needed facility upgrades to ensure that it meets sanitation requirements and it opens on time for schools. The rule states that ARP funds shall not be used directly or indirectly to offset revenue due to tax reductions. If the U.S. Treasury deems that expenditure of ARPA funds during the FY twenty-twenty-six year with the BPT rollback breaches this rule, the government of Guam will be required to either not pay back what it spent or will lose the ability to use whatever funds that were unspent as of the March twenty-twenty-six deadline. Moreover, this over twenty-million, two-hundred-million-plus economic stimulus can reasonably be expected to have a multiplier effect economically because these are local projects. So we will be at a loss of this multiple times over. For these reasons, I cannot support the budget bill or the override. What I would support is a budget bill that addresses the BPT rollback as a separate measure rather than a self-inflicted, rather than create a self-inflicted condition where the government may not have the resources to provide our community with the much-needed services to all. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion, on the motion, are there any senators wishing to speak on the motion? On the motion. Senator, good senator from Talavovo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for this opportunity to rise in strong support of the motion to override vetoed Bill number forty-four dash thirty-eight COR, the FY twenty-twenty-six spending plan, which eleven members of this thirty-eighth Guam legislature, myself included, approved on August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five. We spent hours, we spent days, the work of seven legislative committees came to bear upon one, the Committee on Finance and Government Operations. Nine months of meetings, nine months of talks with many of GovGuam employees, nine months of engagement by our taxpayers, all. Bill forty-four dash thirty-eight was returned here after what I believe was a significant effort to take care of the whole of government while also considering the needs of the whole of the private sector, where every tax dollar appropriated comes from off of their backs. The over sixty thousand men and women of this private sector workforce who barely have time to look up and see things happening around them, many of these folks are watching these deliberations closely today. With much time to think of what has transpired since, Mr. Speaker, I am a hopeful policymaker, guided by doing the right thing. Common sense still makes sense in twenty-twenty-five. As for the twenty-twenty-six Budget Act, there were some bold moves. Set by policy was to push ahead with Simon Sanchez High School, money for our Ailing Guam Memorial Hospital, a cure to their longtime ill of a lack of cash, funding for the new Public Defender Service Corporation away from the judiciary of Guam, and the rollback of the business privilege tax. I call the moves bold, as many of them have taken years to get to this point. Mr. Speaker, in Bill number forty-four dash thirty-eight, not only does the government's spending policy for the new fiscal year provide the resources that is needed to deliver critical public services in health, safety, and education, it represents the legislature's pledge to prioritize long-term economic recovery over growing and already unsustainable bureaucracy. Moving forward, Mr. Speaker, the legislative committee that I chair is committed to coordinating closely with the Committee on Finance and Government Operations to be able to respond to public policy issues that may arise between now and September thirty of next year if Bill number forty-four dash thirty-eight is enacted into law. I ask the executive to do the same. The executive can work shoulder-to-shoulder with us, much like our sister branch of the judiciary of Guam. Together, we can do much more. The executive can be bigger and better here, not in terms of the size of the government, but the distance to which leadership will go to carefully manage the limited resources entrusted based on priority services that our people pay for and expect. They must try for the sake of every man, woman, and child, from Jiggo to Malesu, who call Guam home. I respectfully ask my colleagues to override the veto of Bill number forty-four dash thirty-eight, and I encourage the community to get behind all efforts to support and strengthen our island economy and keep the actions in the new budget law strengthen our island economy and keep the actions in the new budget law front and center of our minds in the weeks and months ahead for the sake of all of the people of Guam. Thank you so much, Mr. Speaker, for the time today.
Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and take a recess for a little bit so they can reset the DOCOMO settings. We're in recess. Let's let this back from recess. On the motion, any other senators wishing to speak on the motion? No senator wishing to speak on the motion? Senator Rains, go ahead. You want to close it? You want to speak? Hang on. Gentlemen from EPE, you're recognized, sir.
Sidus Massey, Mr. Speaker, and Buenos Aires Day to the people of Guam watching on our YouTube channel. And thank you again for the opportunity to rise in opposition to this override attempt. Some of my colleagues on this side of the aisle and even some on the other have argued very articulately their opposition to this budget bill. I believe on the first day of the budget session, I called this bill a reverse Robin Hood measure because what it does is it takes from the most vulnerable and the most poor on our island, and it gives $80 million to the biggest of the big businesses who don't need a tax break because they're already enjoying benefits that the Trump administration has given and will continue to give. One of my colleagues had earlier remarked correctly that the conditions that created this business privilege tax rate that we're trying to roll back, those conditions still exist today. And in fact, the climate for businesses is more favorable under this second iteration of the Trump administration. They're going to receive tax breaks that are going to impact our ability to correct, collect revenues. And here we are, taking from the hospital, taking from the public schools, taking from our people's hard-earned tax refunds, so that the biggest of the big corporations can enjoy not just a $40 million tax break this fiscal year, but another $40 million tax break in the upcoming fiscal year. The Guam Department of Education has said that this budget, if passed, will be a disaster for our public school system. We haven't even yet voted on this override, and already the students at Tezen High School are wondering if their, their school is going to close down, because DOE has been very clear that this budget doesn't give them what they need to move our public school system forward. Many of my colleagues in this hall campaigned on improving the conditions for the people of Guam. They campaigned on improving public safety, the people's health care, public education. But how a day, my dear people of Guam, can we improve these services when they're cutting the money we're going to use to improve these services by $80 million? They campaigned to make things better. But by proffering this worse-than-status quo budget, it's status quo for the agencies, and then we're taking out $80 million when the agencies are already telling us that they are cut to the bone. One of my colleagues rose and talked about the 60,000 people in the private sector and how they're watching this session. I hope they're watching. I hope they're watching this session. I hope they're watching the budget session that we had a few weeks ago. I hope they watch the public hearing. Because, my dear people of Guam, if you watched any of those things, you would see it was very clearly put in black and white that this half percent reduction in this fiscal year, and another half percent rollback in the next fiscal year, is not going to benefit a single one of those 60,000 hard-working employees in the private sector. That's because it's going to go right into the big bosses' pockets at a time when the federal government is already giving so much benefit to the biggest of the big corporations. Here we are, cutting our own wrists to give them even And it's not going to lead to higher wages for the hard-working employees in the private sector. And more importantly, my dear people of Guam, some of my colleagues are in here doing backflips, doing backflips to roll back this BPT for the biggest of the big corporations. And it's not going to lead to lower prices for the people of Guam. It's not going to give Tanana more money to put in the gas tank. It's not going to give Tun Pete more money to put food on the table. So please don't disrespect our people by continuing to peddle the lies on the floor of the people's house. The lies that this BPT rollback to the tune of $80 million is going to benefit the mom-and-pop businesses out there. It is not. It is not, my dear people of Guam. The mom-and-pop businesses are already receiving a discounted rate of business privilege tax. This BPT rollback, as we have very articulately, and I might say eloquently, argued in the budget session, is going to benefit the businesses that make $5, $10, $15, $20 million. And it's not even going to stop there. Businesses that, that rake in $50 million, $75 million, $100 million, my dear people of Guam, they are giving a BPT discount to businesses that earn $200 million, $300 million, such huge sums of money that our grassroots people cannot even begin to understand. Because they're dealing with the chump change, trying to make ends meet, trying to pay the power, trying to put food on the table. But are we thinking about those people? No, we're not. We're thinking about the biggest of the biggest corporations, hundreds of millions of dollars. Call me old school, but I was raised to believe that when you make more, you pay more. And it's hard to stand up, my dear people of Guam. It's hard to stand up and fight. It's hard to stand up and, and speak in opposition of this measure, not because it's not the right thing to do, but because, my dear people of Guam, you couldn't see what was happening in here before we gavelled into this session. They were celebrating, high fives, fist bumps, very, very happy in here on what is going to be one of the saddest days for our dear people of Guam. We already heard the hospital's on the verge of closing down, and the best we could do in this budget bill was offer $30 million in imaginary money, funny money for the very serious problems at the Guam Memorial Hospital. And although we came in here on a separate session and appropriated tens of millions of dollars, GMH was very clear, that's not going to be enough. That's not going to be enough to take care of our people's hospital, to take care of our people, period. It's not going to be enough. This budget bill is a death sentence for the Guam Memorial Hospital. It's a disaster for the Guam Department of Education, and it's a shortchanging of the people's hard-earned tax refunds. But as I heard one of my colleagues say earlier, high five, we got the votes. For every hand that raises in support of this override of the governor's veto is a hand raised for the biggest of the big businesses. It's a hand raised to keep our people under the thumbs of these big corporations who will, who will enjoy a significant $80 million tax break. And not a dollar of that is going to go to lower prices for Tanana and Tun Pete. So my dear people of Guam, I hope you're watching today. I hope you're watching. Watch all of the sessions and listen to what was said, and watch the hands that go up today. And more importantly, watch those hands that stay down, because those are the people who are supporting our hard-working grassroots. Sidus Massey, Mr. Speaker.
On the motion, on the motion, are there any other senators wishing to speak on the motion? Senator Rains, you want to close?
Sidus Massey, Mr. Speaker, and my simple closing is, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we go to the voting file to vote on vetoed Bill Number 44-38COR.
We need to take it to the voting file first, so...
Mr. Speaker, at this time, I move that we place vetoed bill, notwithstanding the objections of the governor, vetoed Bill 44-38 in third reading file.
Okay. On the motion, on the motion, are there any objections? There is an objection. All those in favor of moving to place vetoed Bill Number 44-38COR into the voting file, please indicate by raising your hand. Motion carries.
At this time, Mr. Speaker, I move that we call the roll.
Notwithstanding?
Notwithstanding House rules.
Okay, we're at the third, okay, we're in the third reading, okay, we're in the voting file for the purposes of, of dispensing of this bill. Okay? General Lady from...
Mr. Speaker, I'd ask that the monitors be turned on so we can see who's voting which way or another way, so we can see the hands that are up, so that we can see the faces of the people that are speaking.
It's going to be, it's going to be by roll call.
Yes, still, Mr. Speaker.
It's, it's on.
Only for you, Mr. Speaker, it's on. For the rest of us, it's not. Unless we're going to break our decorum and we're going to face backwards for the session.
It's on for the public. Okay. We are now in the consideration of the De La Fa for the purposes of, notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Hagen, shall vetoed Bill Number 44-38COR be vetoed? the objections of Imaga Hagen, shall veto bill number 44-38COR be vetoed, be overridden? Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Speaker, notwithstanding the rules, I would make a motion that we turn on the video cameras that have been in place for years now here in this legislature, so that all of the senators have the same benefit to view what is going on in the hall without breaking our protocol and facing backwards, Mr. Speaker.
The video feed is on. The public can see the video feed.
It's a motion.
It's on. Okay. Okay, on the motion to turn on the video feed, there is an objection.
Mr. Speaker?
Yes. Sir, you are recognized.
I think there's a confusion here. The video feed, the live streaming continues to go. The open government is in place. There is no rules or there's nothing that says monitors have to be on within this session hall. This session is live-streamed both on YouTube and our legislative channels, just so that there's clarification that because you can't see yourself does not mean that the live stream is not there.
Thank you. On the motion...
Mr. Speaker, I did not say I could not see myself. I can't see my colleagues. My colleagues can't see anyone, especially those in the back.
Yeah, I guess when you're counting votes, you know, you have to look back, I guess, so...
That's correct.
Thank you. There, on the motion to turn on the live feed, there has been an objection. All those in favor of turning on the live feed, please indicate by raising your hand. Motion fails. Madam Clerk, take the roll call, please.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, nay. Speaker Blaz.
Yes.
Speaker Blaz, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Guma Tauta. Senator Guma Tauta, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, nay. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, nay. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, yea. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Trelahi.
Vetoed bill number 44-38COR received 11 yays, 4 nays. Vetoed bill number 44-38COR was overridden by a vote of 11 members of this body. Are there... Senator Laun, you want to move us back to motions? Senator Laun, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that we go back to motions.
On the motion to move back to motions, are there any objections? Seeing objection, motion carries. We are back to motions. General Assemblyman, you recognize, ma'am? On the motions.
Sidoos Masi, Mr. Speaker. Colleagues, notwithstanding the rules, I move to place bill number 13-38 as amended in the Committee on Health and Veterans Affairs and further amended on the floor of the 38th Guam Legislature during the May session onto the second reading file. Bill 1338 has gone through the legislative process, received a public hearing, was amended in committee, and failed in the third reading by the vote of 7 to 8. But since the close of budget deliberations, the public call for this measure has only grown stronger, which is why I bring this motion. And the title of the bill is an act to add a new Chapter 98 to Division 4 of Title 10 Guam Code annotated relative to establishing a public-private partnership for Guam's public hospital. I'd like to speak on the motion, Mr. Speaker.
You can proceed.
Colleagues, I again urge your assistance in putting this bill on the agenda so that we can discuss it, so that we can make it better if possible, and that we can take the first steps towards implementing a public-private partnership at GMH by creating a committee, a P3 committee made up of hospital experts, agency heads, and other stakeholders who will work together to design an RFP with the framework and accountability to stabilize and improve hospital care and to ensure the needed transparency in this process and to ensure that the partnership is successful. I've said previously, the idea of a PPP, a public-private partnership, has been recommended for years, maybe a decade. They've urged us to consider this model. GMH has pushed back against it, saying that they could do it. In 2016, the GMH Hospital Task Force, very prominent members of our community were on that task force, including our current governor, former Committee on Health chairs, personnel who are currently at the hospital, businessmen. They recommended a PPP, a public-private partnership for GMH. That was their number-one recommendation. Since then, our current governor, lieutenant governor, current members of GMH leadership, private sector, and even the general public support this idea. The former GMH medical director advocates for a PPP, using his own experience as the former lieutenant governor, where he learned that, quote, "Government-run health care fails, not because of dedicated frontline workers, but because of systemic mismanagement," unquote. He said, quote, "A PPP model offers Guam its best chance for sustainable, high-quality health care, financially efficient, insulated from politics, and grounded in performance-based accountability." And he concludes, quote, "Guam can build a new hospital, but without reforming how health care is governed, will simply put old problems into new walls. The time to implement a new model is now, before the first brick is laid." The hospital consultant report that GIDEA commissioned was just released last week to us. It also supports a PPP model and says that "to maintain sustainable government health care funding, policymakers must implement strategies that address both current and future challenges." And he lists the public-private partnerships as a strategy to relieve pressure on public systems while maintaining quality of care. These partnerships can also attract investment and innovation. And then he makes a list of things that have to be changed at GMH, many of these that we have heard and that we have been promised by GMH that they would be fixed, but as we can tell, six years later, not fixed. And no plans. Committee of the whole in our special session on September 11, considering a bill from the governor to give $40 million subsidy to GMH, one of the senators from Timuning said, who previously voted against bill 13, concluded that there seems to be a, quote, "money management problem" at GMH, unquote, and stated that a, quote, "better management resource will probably be through a PPP," unquote. GMH leadership sat in this very hall and told us that a public-private partnership would be a good idea. Dr. Yusabio, the chief medical officer, said, and I quote, "The only way it's going to work is if we have this private-public partnership somehow," unquote. During the oversight hearing at GMH last week, the chairman on appropriations told GMH, "You don't have a finance problem, you have an execution problem." Colleagues, how much clearer can it be? There's a growing consensus that a PPP is a viable path. In fact, there is no other real plan to go forward except to keep appropriating money to GMH for fixing systems that they refuse, have refused to fix, despite the money. But those funds, if we continue to just follow that path, will disappear and the problems will remain. In the 37th legislature, we gave a similar $30 million subsidy introduced by the current speaker, along with a $20 million ARP funding from the governor, yet half of that was later redirected to the new hospital infrastructure because GMH allegedly failed to obligate it on time. All that money gone, the problems still remain. The cycle is unsustainable. Our time for good faith is over. A PPP is a drastic measure, but GMH's problems are drastic. I hope you will all agree. This solution may be not perfect, but we are putting together a committee to put their minds together to work with the experts in procurement, legal experts, hospital management experts, to put their minds together and come up with a good deal for Guam, good patient care, and something that is sustainable, that would give our people hope. It's the only option on the table in reality right now that offers us to stabilize the hospital and ensure some kind of accountability and expertise that we need. I urge you to bring your concerns forward, help us to fix this bill, because it's the only concrete solution that we have on the table right now. An alternative, a status quo... Are we offline? What's wrong, Mr. Speaker? I'm confused. Okay. Can you...
Take...
Mr. Speaker's signaling me, yes.
Can we take a moment, please? Ladies and gentlemen, back from recess. Madam Senator...
Sidoos Masi, Mr. Speaker, I'll continue. We're talking about how this bill is the only option on the table right now versus the status quo of just continuing to give the money, money that they ask for, without a real plan going forward as to how we are going to improve and improve patient care. This has the possibility to give us a path for long-term solutions to long-term problems and sustainable, sustainable, a sustainable hospital, one that we can fund, we can feel great about giving more money to because we know exactly what's going to happen with it and that those things will get done. I want to also highlight one very important factor. The fact remains that even without this bill, the governor and GMH management themselves off and on are pursuing public-private partnerships of partial services or assets of the Guam Memorial Hospital, not the management, and they do it without stakeholder input. That is the difference, and that is the urgency. Without transparency, without input, without assurances of accountability or improvement, and without embracing the management shift recommended by previous task forces that can truly be held accountable by contract and that will better guarantee the results we expect on our taxpayers' investment, on their money. Similarly, GMH is also in the process of hiring another CEO without any publicly-vetted parameters to guarantee improvement or success and without any change in the system that would bring additional resources or expertise. And we don't have that luxury, again, of giving the benefit of the doubt to improvement of a system under these conditions. Despite all the good intentions and all the good work of the people at GMH, we need bigger help, more resources that a public-private partnership can bring. And pursuing a massive change in privatizing part or the whole of operations in the hospital cannot and should not be done unilaterally and behind closed doors, but instead should be transparent and include public input. So I ask for my colleagues' support to put this bill on the agenda, notwithstanding the rules, Mr. Speaker, to put it on second reading. Thank you.
There is a motion, notwithstanding the House rules, okay, to put bill 13-38, is that COR, ma'am? 13-38COR onto the session agenda. Are there any objections? There is an objection to it. Therefore, all members in favor of placing bill number 13-38COR, notwithstanding the House rules, onto the session agenda to be discussed in the second reading, please indicate by raising your hand. We are still in motions. Are there any other motions? No other motions? We are now on legislative concurrence. Vice Speaker Ada, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Land, Environment, Housing, Agriculture, Parks, and Infrastructure the nomination of Anita Borja Enriquez, DBA, to serve as a member of the Guam Land Use Commission with the recommendation to do confirm.
On the motion, are there any objections? There are no objections. Motion carries. Senator Taidegui, you're recognized?
Sidoos Masi, Mr. Speaker, and good afternoon. Good afternoon to my colleagues. Mr. Speaker, I move to place in the voting file for the Economic Investment, Military Buildup, Regional Relations, Technology, Regulatory Affairs, Justice, Election, and Retirement, the nomination of Christina D. Garcia to serve as administrator of the Guam Economic Development Authority with the recommendations to do confirm.
On the motion, are there any objections? Hearing, seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Taidegui, ma'am, you're still recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I also would like to move and place into the voting file from the Committee on Economic Investment, Military Buildup, Regional Relations, Technology, Regulatory Affairs, Justice, Election, and Retirement, the nomination of Cisco Haptapia to serve as a member of the Guam Economic Development Authority of Director on the Board of Guam Economic Development Authority of Director on the Board of Directors with the recommendation to do report out only, and I apologize for the mispronunciation of her name, that's H-U-T-A-P-E-A for the record.
On the motion, are there any objections? Hearing, seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Taidi, ma'am, you still recognized?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Speaker, I move to place in the voting file from Economic Investment, Military Buildup, Regional Relations, Technology, Regulatory Affairs, Justice, Election, and Retirement, the nomination of Andrew C. Park to serve as a member of the Guam Economic Development Authority Board of Directors with the recommendation to report out only.
Okay. On the motion, are there any objections? Hearing, seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Taidi, you still recognized, ma'am?
Thank you, and thank you for indulgence. My last one, Mr. Speaker, and I move to place this on the voting file from the Economic Investment, Military Buildup, Regional Relations, Technology, Regulatory Affairs, Justice, Election, and Retirement, the nomination of Raymond A. Schnebel to serve as a member in the Insurance Business Representative section of the Guam Banking and Insurance Board with the recommendation to do confirm.
On the motion, are there any objections? Hearing, seeing no objection, motion carries. Ranking Member, thank you. Ranking Member Senator Munia Barnes, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for giving me the opportunity. From the Committee on Education, Libraries, and Public Broadcasting, I'd like to move the nomination of Marcus W. Fong to serve as a member of the University of Guam's Board of Regents with the recommendation to do confirm.
On the motion, are there any objections? Hearing, seeing no objection, motion carries. Okay, we are now on the second reading. Second reading. General Lady from Timuining, Senator Taidi, are you ready to go? Your first thought? Bill Number 1-38 COR? Let's take a recess further. Let's raise back from recess. General Lady from Timuining, ma'am, you're recognized.
Sidoos Masi, Mr. Speaker and colleagues. Today I rise in the deepest conviction and ask that Bill 1-38 COR introduced by myself... Sorry. Which is an act to amend 26603D5B of Article 2, Chapter 26, Title 11, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the annual appropriation level to the Guam Cancer Trust Fund, and I'd like to place it on the third reading file, Mr. Speaker, and like to speak on it.
You can proceed, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, it is again in deep conviction that Bill 1-38 COR, that I rise in full support, not just, this bill is not just about numbers, Mr. Speaker, or status. It is about our people. Given our history and the ongoing crisis of cancer that claims so many lives, this bill is about justice. This measure ensures that no less than 15% of the Healthy Futures Fund, or 4 million annually, whichever is greater, Mr. Speaker, is dedicated to the Guam Cancer Trust Fund. I want to thank the committee for hearing and moving this bill swiftly. I'm sorry, it is glitching. Okay, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, for decades Guam has carried the heavy shadow of cancer. Our history is filled with stories of exposure, toxic residues from military waste buried in our soil, veterans who patrolled bases, drenched, patrolled bases drenched in Agent Orange, the silent fallout from 66 nuclear tests in the Marshall Islands that reached our shores, our people. And just recently, we have become aware of contaminant water in Jigo poisoned with dildraine. Mr. Speaker, the toll is unbearable. Every two to three days, we lose one of our own. Guam suffers the highest rate of lung cancer per capita in the world. Our Timoro people especially bear a heartbreaking burden with some of the highest mortality rates for cancer, for liver and breast, prostate. Cancer is the second-leading cause of death, stealing one in every six people that you would know. One in every six person that you know is taken by this deadly disease. Mr. Speaker, what has, what has the past legislatures truly done? And it's just so disheartening what they were supposed to do that they didn't do. But did they realize, Mr. Speaker, how many lives they had denied the chance to fight this deadly disease when they were not funding by law the 15% to the Cancer Trust Fund? How many lives were denied that chance to fight? The Guam Legislature has failed the people of Guam. From the FY19 budget until today, this body has underfunded the Cancer Trust Fund by a staggering $19 million. In FY19 alone, not one single cent was even appropriated in FY2019. Let's not be the legislature today that turns the backs on those fighting for their Don't be the senator who chose silence over action, who voted against hope for cancer patients and their families. Every decision we make echoes in the lives of those facing the hardest battles. Let our legacy be one of compassion and courage and commitment, commitment, not neglect. Mr. Speaker, I ask my colleagues to please support this legislation and stand ready in the event anyone has any questions. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, ma'am. On the bill, anyone, anyone wishing to speak on the bill? General Lady from Baragada, ma'am, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise in support of Bill 1-38 sponsored by Senator Taidi, and I thank her for her championing this cause to ensure that we reach the statutory requirement to appropriate the statutory requirement for the Cancer Trust Fund, Guam Cancer Trust Fund. And I support appropriating a minimum of the $4 million or more if 15% more is greater. I would like to add this really stark statistic and one that we all know too well about families and healthcare on Guam. According to the 2022 Guam Cancer and Health Disparities Report, there were 1,587 new cancer cases and 806 cancer deaths over a five-year period, and the majority of the cancers was caught at late stages or could not be staged at diagnosis. So many of our families, because they lack the funds, do not seek help when they, when it's treatable and it could prolong their lives. And this is very sad that we're, that this is happening. It is imperative that we support this bill to assure a minimum of $4 million goes to the Guam Cancer Trust Fund that not only provides treatment, that provides treatment and related services to cancer patients, but can also help to capture cancer at earlier stages through screening and early detection. According to the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network, in 2025, it is estimated that one person per day in Guam will be diagnosed with cancer. The Guam Cancer Trust Fund plays a critical role in supporting nonprofit charitable organizations in delivering essential services related to cancer, prevention, diagnosis, treatment, education, and outreach. The Guam Cancer Trust Fund plays a critical role in supporting the nonprofit charitable organizations in delivering these services. The Catholic Social Services testified stating that diagnosis of cancer in the forms of treatments is often catastrophic for the patient and their families, including the effects of the disease, the physical impact of treatment, and the financial strain from duration of treatment, including going off island. And so, for these reasons, it's so critical that we as a body continue to support the full amount appropriated and increase, an increase, to treat this illness that's affected our community. And I thank the sponsor for her advocacy in this. Sidoos Masi.
Thank you very much. On the bill, are there any senators wishing to speak on the bill? On the bill. General Lady from Baragada, ma'am, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Baragada after Baragada, BIBA. Mr. Speaker, colleagues, half a day. I rise today in full support of Bill 1-38 COR, a measure that strengthens our commitment to the Guam Cancer Trust Fund and more importantly to the people that it serves. Many amongst us have lost someone to this disease or are currently fighting it now. The need for sustainable, dependable funding for cancer screening, treatment awareness, and patient support is not optional. It is moral. It is urgent. Every one of us here knows someone who has battled cancer, a parent, a spouse, a neighbor, a friend. Cancer touches every village, every family, every heart, and too often it strikes without warning, leaving our people to fight not only for their lives, but also for access to care, for financial help, and for hope. Bill 1-38 is more than just a budgetary adjustment, Mr. Speaker. It is a lifeline. It ensures that the trust fund has the support it needs to continue providing screenings, treatments, outreach, and patient support services, especially for those who cannot afford them. We often say that the government should be there when the people need it most. Well, this is one of those moments. So by passing this bill, Mr. Speaker, we show our cancer patients and their families that they are not alone and that their government stands with them. Let us do the right thing. Let us pass Bill 1-38 and honor those we have lost, support those still fighting, and invest in a future where cancer care is not a privilege but a promise. I commend the author for this heartfelt legislation, and I would like to request that I be added as a co-sponsor. Sidoos Masi, Mr. Speaker, for the chance to speak.
Thank you very much. On the bill, on the bill, are there any other senators wishing to speak on the bill? General Lady from... John, you're recognized, ma'am?
Sidoos Masi, I want to thank the sponsor of this bill for this legislation and for pointing out to us over the years when there was a shortfall in this appropriation made to the Cancer Trust Fund. Again, this is significant because this, these funds come from what they call the syntaxes, the alcohol and tobacco, and they've actually been decreasing over the years. So according to BBMR, in 2020, we were up to 39.9 million in this kind of Healthy Futures Funds taxes. In 2021, same, similar. And in 2022, it went down by 3 million. 2023, it was down from 39 to 27 million. That's from 2020 to 2023. And from, in 2024, it went down again by 7 million. And I think if that's the trend, if I recall correctly, for FY25, it was tracking lower than what was predicted for the Healthy Futures Fund. And why I bring this up is because committing a minimum is significant if we are receiving less. That means we're not giving a percentage, we're giving a minimum of 4 million, and I completely agree. And I think the author and subsequent speakers stated it very eloquently, how we are facing cancer on Guam in every single family and that the impacts of the having cancer, we can't even adequately express with the time that we have here, to our people's lives, to their children, to generations really. So I fully support giving them a minimum. I want to point out however that Cancer Trust Fund is receiving 15% of the Healthy Futures Fund. GMH is receiving 12%. Guam Cancer Registry receives 1%. The rest of this money is subject to legislative appropriation. So that's one of the reasons why I have absolutely no problem dedicating more to cancer, cancer care, especially in the absence of support services, sometimes medication, whatever they need, transportation. But it's also been brought to my attention that we here on Guam, I mean, undeniable, our entire healthcare system is really challenging every single family for many other diseases, including cancer, including diabetes. These again have generational impacts, the younger deaths, the families left without providers, the families left, children left without parents, parents losing children in their youth. Our community is really under siege by cancer, diabetes, other... Our community is really under siege by cancer, diabetes, other diseases. We really need to shore up our healthcare system, our community health centers, our hospital, and all of the people that work in those places to give our patients the best care that we possibly can. So again, Sidoz Masi, I support this bill wholeheartedly.
Thank you very much, Senator. On the bill, are there any senators, gentlemen from Ipanoak, you are recognized.
Sidoz Masi, Mr. Speaker, and again, buenos to the people of Guam watching on our YouTube livestream and also on Documento GTA. Sidoz Masi. And thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to rise in strong support of this measure. And I know some of the people watching might wonder why a measure like this is even necessary. I'll tell you why a measure like this is even necessary: because we can all stand up and talk about how much we support people who are fighting cancer, can talk about our family members, friends, who have fought cancer. But if we don't put the money where our mouth is, none of that matters. And I was a member, my first term, we saw a significant shortchanging of cancer patients in a budget process. And that was kind of the theme in the public hearing for this bill, is you had people giving testimony about how cancer patients and nonprofits that assist cancer fighters and their families had to take to the streets. They had to go to the ITC intersection, they had to go to the Chief Kapua intersection because their duly-elected representatives decided that a racetrack was more important than giving meaningful support to people who fight cancer and their families. And we know all too well how critical and crucial the assistance that these funds with the Guam Cancer Trust Fund are to people fighting cancer and their families. And I know because I've gone through the process a couple times, you know, both my mom's sisters passed from cancer, and I remember Auntie Jeannie, she's my mom's youngest sister. I look at her every day because I got her picture up in the hallway, at the door at the end of the hallway, so every time I come down that hallway, I always see Auntie Jeannie. And she thought she had vertigo. She would say, "Oh, boy, I can't watch the kids." She used to watch my kids, she used to stay over there in Gora and San Anya, and kids always had a blast with her. It's funny when you have relatives, if you're raised by your aunties, sometimes they're meaner to you and you don't really get to see how nice they are until you have kids, and then you're like, "Whoa, where were these aunties when we were growing up?" But my kids used to love to go over there, and it started one time, she said, "Oh, I just feel dizzy, boy, I don't feel good." Next time, there was an appointment, they said it was vertigo, she wanted to get a second opinion, it wasn't vertigo, it was cancer, it spread all up her back. And like so many people who have dealt with a diagnosis of cancer, there was only one thing for the family to do, and that was to try and find which relative in which state has the cheapest services that our poor people can afford. And sadly, many of us go through this. You know, I went through with my mom's older sister, Auntie Lawling, went through with my Pari Savage K. Which of these states can you go move to so that you can get treatment for cancer? And so with Auntie Jeannie, it was Minnesota. She went to go stay with my first cousin, Andrea, and she didn't even last seven months. She took up one of the basement rooms in my cousin's house, and you know how it is when you have someone who goes off-island, you talk to them, and they're okay, they start off feeling good, hopeful, and as the months went by, it became clear that my Auntie Jeannie was never going to come home alive. When she finally did come home, she came home in a vase. And so when you prepare to go off-island to try and get that care for your family, whether it's your auntie, your Pari, your cousin, your parent, your child, you kind of go through this checklist where you go to the Guam Cancer Cares, you go to the EMC Guam is Good, you go to these different entities and you see what you can get. And one of the things that you can get from these nonprofits is a little grant. I remember all three times we were able to get $500, which doesn't seem like much, but when you're just facing these enormous costs of trying to keep your loved ones alive, $500 goes a long way. And so when we shortchanged the cancer patients and they had to take to the streets, it made me very angry, made me very upset that, you know, we can run for office and we could talk about how much we want to support people who are fighting cancer, and then at the end of the day, some people won't even raise their hand for the very people who are fighting for their lives. And so that's why this bill is a necessity. That's why this measure is necessary, is because in this business of politics, a lot of times, people write checks with their mouth that they don't want to, they're dogging to cash. And I was encouraged to see that one of my colleagues who heads the Finance Committee is going to be hearing these bills that seek to apply a tax to vape and the electronic nicotine delivery system, because that's why we've seen a decrease in these funds for the Healthy Futures, is because people are moving off cigarettes and they're vaping. And we're talking about significant numbers of people who have, and maybe some of them just, oh, they like the smell of strawberry cotton candy more than Camel non-filter. Some of them, they go, they start vaping because they think it's going to help them quit smoking cigarettes, but, you know, if you know people who vape, most of the time they never do, they're just vapors now. And so we are missing a lot of money from that stream of revenue where we're not taxing these vape shops. And if you take a look around, these vape shops are popping up faster than the diabetes. And so not only do I rise in support of this measure, but I encourage my colleagues to work together to meaningfully tax the vape and the ends and whatever you want to call it, so that we capture this lost revenue, so that we can give more money to the cancer patients and their families who are fighting for their lives, Mr. Speaker. So I thank you for the opportunity to rise in support of the measure. I commend the good author from Timuining, and I as well would like to be included as a co-sponsor, and I urge the, and I'm pretty sure this measure is going to pass unanimously. I appreciate that we're going to apply a minimum, but, you know, as one of my colleagues had said, you know, a large sum of these funds are subject to legislative appropriation. And as we hear so many mungas, so many ahis, whether it's, you know, trying to get compensation for people who lived on Guam during the time we were testing the atomic and nuclear bombs and that radiation came this way. But what are we hearing from Uncle Sam? No. No, Guam can't be part of the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act. We're reading in the news now about the threat of dildraine and the risk of cancer to residents in the north, and that has people all over the island wondering just how safe their drinking water is. And so as we see the threats of cancer-causing issues, water denials from the federal government, it's absolutely an obligation. You know, people talk about obligation to the businesses in here. What about obligation to the people of Guam who are fighting for their lives, Mr. Speaker? And so I thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of this measure and for us to really kind of put some money where our mouth is when it comes to supporting those who are fighting cancer and their families. Sidoz Masi, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. On the bill, gentlemen from Timuining, show your recognizance.
Sidoz Masi, Mr. Speaker, and I certainly rise in full support of Bill 1-38, and I commend the author for her stewardship on this effort, not just through this bill, but through prior advocacy. You know, there is obviously a storied past, Mr. Speaker, particularly with this one appropriation. And I just wanted to kind of adjust maybe some of the comments from the previous speaker in terms of what the reality of the picture of priorities was and has been. Mr. Speaker, as you know, at least the last two budgets that we've discussed, one of the issues that surfaced when we talk about priorities was the issue that when we got to the miscellaneous appropriations, there was an avalanche of appropriations that ended up, by the time we stopped it, at about $120 million, chasing $27 million of projected revenue excess. When we talk about irresponsibility, that is the peak and the height of irresponsibility. When we talk about promises, promises made and promises impossible to be kept, that was a demonstration of pure disingenuousness. And one of the discussion points was, well, you know, if you say it's $27 million, well, first in, first out. Well, what happens if the Cancer Trust Fund wasn't in the first $27 million? And I bring that back, Mr. Speaker, to say that I'm glad that the author set a minimum because it's true. The bodies over the years have made a decision for appropriation, not prioritizing. How do you prioritize? You prioritize by law, and that's what we're doing. You know, I appreciate the author of the legislation because, like I said, advocating throughout the process prior and supporting that we went to a supplemental appropriation that realized that funding has a priority, not as part of funny money. Let's talk about funny money. $120 million chasing $27 million of possible excess revenue. So, Mr. Speaker, this is a responsible approach, and this is, after now having overridden the governor's veto, and now having the 2026 budget in play, this is the exercise that you, myself, and hopefully everybody in this body is going to take part in, not prioritizing and budgeting as an exercise for a few months and then chasing rainbows and pots of gold, but actually having a series of hearings, month after month after month, to monitor the expenditures of this government and to take care of priorities such as the Cancer Trust Fund. Because as much as we talked about during that time and as much we were talking about this priority, Mr. Speaker, all of the sky that's falling and things that are going to happen, we forgot that when we had conversations with most of the people, particularly in the large entities that were before us, with few exceptions, we're lapsing millions, tens of millions of dollars. And so priority, yes. Priority given, priority by the work that the author did, priority by ensuring, even as in the committee report, even as the fiscal note on this said, there was a possibility that even with the $4 million, an excess revenue would have been more, but here we are. We're here now making a statement, and I'm glad the author continued to work with me on this, and by working on it, it meant making sure that those other budgets had at least what we said we were going to do. The $3 million ended up at $3.5 million, and it was sustained once again through this current budget, which we've overridden, amongst a number of other good things that we did in that budget. And now, when this becomes law, there will be no question. That's good work. That's good work. And that's true priorities without throwing out a bunch of rhetorical statements, just okay. But the truth lies in the real work that's done and the real work that this author's done. Real money, real money going forward. Sidoz Masi, Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. On the bill, ranking member from Pogobay, ma'am, you are recognized.
Promise, Mr. Speaker, to make this short. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to rise in support of this measure, 1-38, relative to the annual appropriation levels of the Guam Cancer Trust Fund. I will note that when BBMR did their breakdown on this and the fund source of the Guam Cancer Trust Fund says the taxes collected under the Healthy Futures Funds, the current law appropriates the $1 million of taxes collected under the Healthy Futures Funds, and it has a breakdown to the hospital for the sole specific purpose for the funding of the line of credit based on the statute, and then that same law also appropriates other proceeds from taxes collected under the Healthy Futures Funds. And of course, it says that 72% of that is subject to our August bodies appropriation for the health and medical programs as mandated, and then 15% to the Cancer Trust Fund, 12% to the hospitals' operating expenses, and then 1% to the Cancer Registry. And, Mr. Chair, as I support this efforts, I want to make sure that all these other programs that are included with this section, that they get its needed resources. So in that effort, I know that it said that the Healthy Futures Funds collections shows that 15% appropriated from the Cancer Trust Fund is approximately $4.7 million, exceeding the $4.4 million proposed in this bill. And I just want to make sure that I think the intent, and I think the justification, and I think the citation that's already existing in law, that it's all critical, sensitive, and important, and we have to just make sure that we align, that the appropriations are aligned and the programs based on the statute that is already provided for today is given. So in that effort, I just want to thank the good author from, I think it's Timuining, right, still, Oregonia, that this bill is literally showing that this August body supports the efforts for those who are truly suffering. The rates of cancer here on our island is so high, and as you heard our previous speakers, these are things that we don't ask for. Sometimes, you know, depending on what has happened during World War II and after, right, all these elements came up to play. And in that effort, you know, we always having to find how we can help our community. But in this effort, it delineates and explicitly shows a breakdown. So, Mr. Speaker, in that effort, I'm going to support this, and I know that if there's anything that needs to be offsetted or anything that we need to ask based on already what's existing, that we can always come back to this body notwithstanding. So in that effort, I am So in that effort, I am going to support this bill 100% and thank the good author from Oregonia-Timuining for letting, for proffering this main motion to this body, and hopefully that all our colleagues will support that effort, and maybe she can include all of us in the effort. So, sign him, I'll see.
Thank you very much, ma'am. On the bill. On the bill, gentlemen from Timuining, show your recognizance.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, Mr. Speaker, I rise in full support of Bill Number 1, of course authored by the good senator from Timuining. You know, as someone who had both, of course, parents succumb to cancer. And I'm sure if not everybody, most everybody in this legislature has had a family member who's been stricken by cancer as well. So I stand in full support. Bill Number 1-38, which seeks to allocate critical resources to the Guam Cancer Trust Fund. This is more than just legislation, Mr. Speaker. It's about providing hope, support, and tangible assistance to our families and neighbors facing the challenges of cancer. And I also want to take a moment to recognize the tireless advocacy of former Senator Luis Vorja. She has long championed this cause as well, ensuring that the needs of the cancer patients and their families remain at the forefront of our legislative priorities. Her dedication, of course, laid the foundation for the work we continue today, and for that, we owe her our gratitude. This bill represents a continuation of that commitment, Mr. Speaker. By supporting the Guam Cancer Trust Fund, we are investing in the health and well-being of our community. We're also giving families access to the resources they need, supporting early detection and treatment, and ultimately, of course, saving lives. So with that, Mr. Speaker, again, I just want to encourage my colleagues that join me in voting in favor of Bill 1-38. Not just as lawmakers, but also as members of a community committed to caring for one another, Mr. Speaker. With that, thank you, and I commend again the author, and I would like to be a co-sponsor of the bill as well. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
You're very much welcome. On the bill, are there any senators willing to speak on the bill? Senator Tidaway, you would like to close on the bill?
Sido Massey, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, before I do my closing remarks, I would like to make a motion to include Resolution 2-35 passed unanimously by the Guam Youth Congress, and this is relative to expressing the strong support of Imenentrenthaiy Cienko na komisyon, I mean, komisyon, no, Kongresyon, sorry, Kongresyon Manhoben Guahan for Bill Number 1-38 COR relative to the annual appropriation level to the Guam Cancer Trust Fund, urging Imenentrenthaiy Ochen a hasla turin guahan to expeditiously pass this bill to sustain and enhance the efforts to combat cancer in our island community with particular attention to the needs of youth individuals and families affected by the disease and recognizing the impact of cancer on youth of Guam. And this resolution has been emailed by yourself to all our colleagues here so they can read it, and I hope you do take the chance to read it, and I'd like to include it into the record, Mr. Speaker, and include it into the committee report.
You hear that motion? Any objections? So ordered.
Sido Massey, Mr. Speaker, and I also, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to especially thank those who provided testimony on Bill 1-38 during the public hearing, and some who've written testimony in was Dr. Palino, chairman of the Guam Cancer Trust Fund and members of the board, the Guam Comprehensive Cancer Control Coalition, the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network, the Guam Cancer Care, especially Director Terry Kubo, Catholic Social Services Executive Director, who submitted. Also, former Senator Luis Munya, a longtime warrior in the fight against cancer. And again, I'd like to thank the Guam Youth Congress for their support in Bill 138 through Resolution 235. What an inspiring display of leadership. This resolution they provide is our future leaders telling us and seeing the challenges that they see through their eyes by understanding the full human impact of this disease. They say beyond the patient to recognize the emotional and practical burden placed on our youth because care for our loved ones, a strain that affects the entire family. I want to take this moment to acknowledge and thank the advocates who continue to fight battles bigger than themselves, like Robert Celestial of the Pacific Asian for Radiation Survivors, who have spent decades fighting for recognition and compensation for Guam's exposure. His voice and the voices of so many like him remind us that people suffering cannot be ignored. Colleagues, Bill 138 is about more than just appropriations. It's about hope, justice, and survival. It is a statement that Guam will not turn its back on its people from today moving forward. In fact, colleagues, let's make this bill more than just legislation. Let's make it a pledge, a pledge that will fight cancer with every resource, with every ounce of strength and every tool we have. And today, your most powerful tool is your vote. A vote for yes on Bill 138 is a vote for hope, for action, and for every family battling this disease. Mr. Speaker, I would like to make an amendment, one more amendment, if I could, please, and that is to include co-sponsors. And the first one I'd like to include is Senator Chris Barnett. And I'd like to include yourself, Speaker Frank Blass, Senator Sabina Perez, Senator Therese Trelahi, Senator Shelley Calvo, Senator Chris Duenas, Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes, and Senator Jesse Luhan. And then if there's anyone, okay, Senator Sabrina Salis Mantanani, if there's anyone else. Senator Joe Sinagastin, Senator Tony, Vice Speaker Tony Ada. Is anyone else? I might be missing who's here? Okay, oh.
John.
And of course, Senator Gudmatautau. So I'd like to make that motion.
On the motion to include also the wish present at this time to be co-sponsored of Bill 1-38, any objections? No objections, so ordered.
And, Mr. Speaker, I move to place this very important bill, Bill 1-38, to the voting file. Sido Massey.
On the motion to move place Bill 1-38 COR as amended on the floor into the third reading, are there any objections? Hearing seen objection, motion carries.
Again, Sido Massey, Mr. Speaker, and colleagues.
Thank you. Bill 7-38 COR, Senator Sinagastin, you are recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. At this time, I move to place Bill 7-38 as amended by the Committee on Land onto the third reading and wish to discuss the bill.
Can you read the title, please?
Bill 7-38 as amended by the Committee on Land is an act to repeal and reenact a new subsection 75122C2 and add a new subsection 75122D and subsection 75122E to Chapter 75 of Title 21 Guam Code Anted relative to requiring the Chamoland Trust to solicit competitive bids for mass grading and mineral extraction of portions of lot 5412. Mingila, this is sponsored by myself.
Sure, can you repeat that because I have here that you two other sections that you want to be able to add? 75122F and 75122G?
That's correct. Also, to add the 75122G, F and G, correction, F and G. Want me to read it again?
Please.
Okay. An act to repeal and reenact a new section 75122C2 and add new section 75122D and subsection 75122E and 75122F and 75122G to Chapter 75 of Title 21 Guam Code Anted relative to requiring the Chamoland Trust to solicit competitive bids for the mass grading and mineral extraction of a portion of lot 5412 Mingila.
And you wish to?
To speak, speak on the bill.
Pardon me?
Objection to hearing the bill, discussion.
There is an objection, so I'm going to have to go ahead and dispose of the, okay? On the motion to move Bill Number 7-38 COR as introduced by Senator Joe Sinagastin with an opportunity to discuss it. There has been objection. All those in favor of the mo, okay? Of the motion, please indicate. Indicate by raising your hand. Just to discuss it and then?
It's only for discussion, I mean, this is something about this.
I know, it's only for discussion.
But she wants to object to the discussion.
Yes.
Okay, so?
All those in favor of, okay, the motion to discuss the bill.
In favor to discuss it. Is it amended, as amended? It's amended.
This is as amended, but I just need for him to read the whole title. Let's take a recess. Okay, we're back from recess, okay? There is an objection to the motion to discuss Bill 7-38 COR as amended, that was, okay, read into the file. All those in favor of the motion? All those in favor of the motion? The motion was to the third reading to, the motion was to move it to third reading, but want to discuss it. And discuss it, okay? The normal process is that we'll have the discussion, and then there's going to be the renewed the motion to go to third reading. Okay, that's the renewed motion, okay? So with that, there's still an objection. All those in favor of, okay, the discussion on Bill 7-38 COR, please indicate by raising your hand. Motion carries. You can proceed on your discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Wow, that's a good exercise. You know, Mr. Speaker, this is my third time introducing this bill. I'm so grateful that it is finally on the session floor for this body to discuss, for it will help all our people. For so long, the Chamoland Trust Commission has worked to lease lots to our island families in the hopes that it will help them build homes or farms that will help their families live better lives. Over the last couple of years, there have been but a handful of leases issued due to properties not being properly surveyed or other issues that arose. The goal of Bill 7 is to award a bidder through an RP a license to handle topographic and cadastral surveys, environmental and cultural assessment, mitigation of necessary permits, and must be Guam Contractors License, Board License, and Mine Safe Health Administration certified. This will help get our CLTC lands leased out to our people while giving the different sectors in government, private, and family achieve different things. First, we have the CLTC. By passing Bill 7, we allow the CLTC to solicit bids for the mass grading of property adjacent to GPA-GWA headquarters on Backroad in Mingila. If you are familiar with this area, you already know that this property is inaccessible and currently unsuitable for habitation or building of homes as the terrain is not flat. The work done in this area will require prudent plan aggregation extraction that will result in a land form that accommodates new homestead lots and a large pad for another public service building like the Gloria Nelson Public Service Building. This will assist CLTC in providing lots for the thousands of applicants on the waitlist. Second, is the private sector, the area is known to have quality limestone that is available for Guam Construction Industry, which acquires approximately 1.5 million cubic yards of limestone aggregate. The market value of this aggregate may range anywhere from $2 to $5 or perhaps more per cubic yard. This extraction may potentially yield up to $2 million for a CLTC over the next several years. The extraction of this much-needed aggregate will prevent the cost of housing, road, and other construction from skyrocketing further from the already high cost of construction. Mr. Speaker, the bill includes a provision to allow for a life rate program that will assist companies that build homes for low, moderate-income families. This will further enable these homes to be built at more affordable rates. The bill is not exclusive for a military constructor, as some argue. It is for all to benefit from. The award of the bill, of the bid, will be required to fulfill all permitting processes. Waivers are not permitted in this bill. CLTC will further require that the awardee meet several other requirements to ensure the care of the people's property is conducted with the best outcomes to their benefit. These include pre-grading tasks such as cadastral and topographic surveying, biological and archaeological assessment, environmental impact assessments as may be required by the Guam Environmental Protection Agency, mitigation of environmental and/or cultural resources when required, and submission of grading plans that yield final landforms selected by CLTC. Additionally, the winning bidder will be required to report on their progress during and at the end of grading. These permits and environmental surveys must be completed before any work begins. And third, our people, our people will be beneficiaries of much-needed infrastructure improvements with the CLTC. Not only will we be opening additional lots for more families to be leased to, but the money generated from this will assist in providing much-needed resources for a CLTC to meet their mission. Accordingly, the lots prepared by the extraction will be ready for distribution as the infrastructure is laid in place upon the completion of the extraction. Mr. Speaker, these benefits, along with the list of requirements to protect the beneficiaries of this property, especially our people, are in place for this project and will result in an opportunity for all to benefit from at the end. Bill 7 also sets a clear end date. The extraction license ends when the final land form is completed. If milestones are missed or after six years, whichever comes first, preventing an open-ended mining operation. Let's give CLT the additional resources needed to effectively execute their mission that in return will get our families on lots that will help achieve resilience. I hope for my colleagues' support for this bill and look forward to our discussion. Sidus Massey. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, sir. On the bill? On the bill? Are there any senators wishing to speak on the bill? On the bill? Senator from Baragana, you're recognized, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just want a point of inquiry regarding the opening statement. I just want to make sure because I thought I heard that it was going to pay for infrastructure. Can you clarify if this, what he said about infrastructure?
The author yield to the question?
The intent, the intent of the bill is that when they sell the aggregate, it provides them funding to provide infrastructure on the lots. That's the, that's the intent of the bill. Now, if they use it for other areas other than that specific area, then that's beyond me. That's, that's all in the Chamorlan Trust Commission. And it'd be prudent for them to use it and they grade it and they sell it, they survey it, put the infrastructure right next to GPA and GWA. It would be the smartest thing for them to do.
Thank you. Thank you. Does that answer your question, ma'am? Do you have any other question? You should have the floor.
Okay, I have another question regarding this bill. So what this bill proposes to do, it actually repeals commercial licensing in law and replaces it with this specific project. And I would like to ask, how does this impact any other commercial licenses that were granted under this part of law? And, yeah, so has the author contemplated that?
Did you? Author, you willing to yield to the question?
Mr. Speaker, I never contemplated anything to do with other commercial leases. This is specifically to that area that I've been after for the past now. It's one of the fifth year. So if there is a requirement for commercial, then this bill is all about that area only, nothing else.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
No, it doesn't. Apparently, this bill is flawed because it didn't foresee what it will do to the commercial licensing. It would remove that part of law that CLTC relies on for commercial licensing and only addresses one lot. I think this bill needs to go back to committee for that reason. Not, and not only that, there's other flaws in this bill. There are citations that don't exist. There is a, what is it called? A change in terms. So for instance, they measure how much it's going to cost per cubic yard, but yet they're going to monitor by, by ton, price per ton. So this bill is really flawed and I really think that it should go back to committee to get the proper analysis and proper wording in this bill.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion to send it back to committee because this bill is flawed.
Okay. On the motion to send the bill back to committee, ma'am, on the motion, would you like to speak?
Yes. I agree, and I also intended to raise a point of order on the same points because this bill, Section 2, in the very beginning, it repeals 75122C2 of Chapter 75. It completely repeals it. This is public law 33-95, sponsored by former Senator Tom Ada. And this was a law put in place even before the settlement of the lawsuit for the CLTC and before enactment of the new Chapter 75. By deleting, repealing this section, it completely repeals competitive bid for commercial leases for the CLTC. And in its place for governing all commercial bids and that they, mandating that they be competitive and, and other provisions in here, it just wipes those clean and allows only for the lease of this one lot for this one mineral extraction purpose. That, and then as the senator said, it also, this will, repealing this will have a negative impact on so many things that were not mentioned in the public hearing because they're not mentioned in the title of the bill at all, that that's what we're also trying to do besides trying to lease out 5412, that we are going to prevent other leases. They also, that's a huge negative impact for the trust. It also is in the wrong chapter because again, we had a lawsuit and a settlement and going forward are supposed to commit to that settlement and commit to the whole new laws that were set. And there's also provisions in here that where the citations just don't, don't match up. And so we don't know, for example, what expense the developers must pay versus what the Chamorlan Trust is going to pay. Sidus Massey. So I support, I support that motion.
Okay, there, on the objection, on the objection, okay? Gentlemen from EPE, you are recognized.
Sidus Massey, Mr. Chair. I just want to also rise in support of the motion being made to send the bill back to committee. Even with the numerous errors, whether they be intentional or not that the previous speakers have stated for the record, I would also like to just raise the point that I brought up in the public hearing that the families of Antonio Duñez Cruz, Elaine Cruz Ochoa, Andrew M. Cruz, Cecilia Cruz Alacoa, and Francisco Campos. Mr. Speaker, with all due respect, these are families that are living on this lot that we're trying to turn into a quarry. So for those reasons, coupled with the reasons brought up by the two retiring speakers, I would also support the motion to send the bill back to committee. With all due respect, Mr. Speaker, there are people living on this, this lot, families living on this lot, sir.
Thank you. Gentlemen from Gigo, sir, on the, on the motion to?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Speaker. Or you want to comment? Yeah, I'm-
No, 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 this is on the motion. We're still on the, on her motion. And he wants to speak on the, the good senator wants to speak on the motion. Then you can speak. This is, okay?
Okay. Number one, Mr. Speaker, everything they brought up, like I, like I said, this is, this is the, what, the fifth year now this bill's been brought up. At no point has any of their concerns have ever been brought before the committee. I have the committee chair right next to me. I asked him, is there a chance? Is there anything that we need to amend to meet the needs of the people of Guam? He said, nothing was ever said. Now we're before the body. Now all of a sudden now, there's all kinds of controversy. Mr. Speaker, I just object to their, whatever reasons they have, and we just move on. And if it fails, then it fails. And we move on.
Point of information, I did relay this information in, in the public, public hearing.
Thank you. On the motion, General Lady from Tunmoring, you're recognized, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I, I also rise in support of sending this back to committee. You know, we're not saying we kill the bill right now. We're sending it back to committee. And one of the biggest reasons why we're doing this, not just on the legal side of it, Mr. Speaker, is because we did not have enough experts during that public hearing. WEary was not there. EPA was not there. BSP Coastal Management was not there. These are experts. We are not experts on how much limestone shall be extracted from this island before you go to sea level or before you lose all the filter, the natural filtration for our aquifer. We are not the experts. And those who need to be, actually, need to be here, but they're not, but those who need to chime in are those individuals, just these three individuals. I, I would also love to hear from US EPA as well. We all know what's happening in Gigo right now. And what we want to do is just fly, let's let this go fly through because of why? Why? I think some people are figuring this out. Mr. Chair, as an oversight chair, a committee chair of my agencies, I don't let a bill out until I make sure these individuals who are experts chime in. I make phone calls after phone calls to say, please, make a decision, make a, a testimony on this. Provide your information, your data. And then it goes through, the bill goes through. But we cannot let bills just because somebody did not provide their testimony on the day that you wanted them to be there. We have to do our due diligence, colleagues. It's our responsibility. It's the lifeline of our island, and that's the water. Because regardless if you say quarry and digging up the limestone, you're affecting our lifeline. And we just, we're seeing it in Gigo right now. And if the whole village of Gigo came down here right now, they will say, stop. Because it's not just drinking the water, Mr. Speaker. It's bathing in it that you can have harmful effects. If everyone thinks all buy bottled water, well, what are you using to wash everything else in your household, your dishes? Taking a bath, putting babies in a bathtub to wash them? That water. And if we are not going to do our due diligence and owe it to the people of Guam, then we have failed. We are asking that the bill is sent back to committee so that we can thoroughly look this over. There are things in this bill, Mr., Mr. Speaker, that didn't even involve those who oversee the environmental, the EIS was not incorporated in this. And what kind of message are we sending US EPA moving forward on a bill like this without any protections or guidelines or experts? So I ask to, and I ask my colleagues to please support this. If you're, you want, you like the bill, then let's make it a better bill. Put it back to committee and let's hear from these really important agencies. We didn't even hear from Water Works. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Vice Speaker, the gentleman from Afam, Mr. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, as the Oversight Chair of Lands, our public notice hearing did go out to all the agencies that were, that were required to be there. Now, whether an agency comes down to testify on a bill or not, it's way beyond its body's control. And we have to make those decisions on what we can do to move things forward. Now, if we were to stop at every time an agency doesn't come down to testify, can you imagine how many bills won't be moving forward today? So yes, perhaps some agencies didn't come down to represent and, and speak on any, and not just Lands bill, any bill, whether it be housing or labor, wherever it may be. We cannot stop progress for an agency to come down and if they decide to send in testimony. And that's why this legislative body is here. So for anyone to insinuate that we're gonna, that these individuals were not present and we didn't do our job is absolutely false.
Point of information, Mr., or point of personal privilege at this point.
There's no personal privilege?
Then point of information.
What's your point of information?
Point of information, Mr. Chair, is that I said that we should continue to reach out to these agencies, whether they come to the public hearing or not. It's our responsibility to reach out. Everybody's busy. So my point of information is that I did not say, you know, to, they didn't, nobody did their due diligence. I'm just saying that we need to continue to reach out to these agencies to ensure that they respond to us.
And that's, that's exactly right, Mr. Speaker. So perhaps the agencies that didn't do their due diligence in sending testimonies, then they have to be the one that's looked at. But to insinuate the Oversight Chair didn't do their due diligence is absolutely false.
Thank you. There has been a motion to send the bill back to committee. The motion has, okay, there is an objection to the motion. Therefore, all those in favor of moving the bill back to committee, please indicate by raising your hands. Motion fails. Senator Perez, you still have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So I rise in strong opposition to Bill 7-38 because it mandates environmental destruction of Chamorlan Trust properties due to the extraction of about 3 million cubic yards of limestone aggregate. I ask, what is our land worth? Throughout our recent history, we have attempted to place a dollar value on our land. We have found in hindsight that much of it was sold or taken without just or appropriate compensation. When measured in price alone, we greatly undervalue the soil upon which our people were raised, on which they live and continue to live, and from which they and their cultures, culture are nourished. Bill 7-38 is a proposal to cause permanent irreversible destruction to an irreplaceable resource which the bill has failed to acknowledge. Fedean Cove, a focal point of cultural heritage, environmental value, and of recreational importance. The threat posed by Bill 7-38 towards access to Fedean Cove is worth considering, noting its endless worth as both a unique and naturally beautiful location and as a resource to hikers, tourists, fishermen, and to our native people as a whole. In return for this most precious resource, Bill 7-38 estimates a return of now $2 million per year to the Chamorlan Trust for the next six years. A mere $12 million in exchange for irreversible destruction of naturally occurring nearly endangered limestone forests as well as the land, which I consider a natural wonder which took millennia to develop. With no guarantees, the land will one day be returned in a condition ready or appropriate for use. Like one of the retiring speakers said, we do not have the geological information of this land. And we know there are sinkholes nearby, which, by the way, is the fast recharge of our aquifer. So any contamination above this land will most likely quickly infiltrate our aquifer. We face this issue regarding land time and time again. In most of our attempts to attain funds in exchange for prime land, we have ultimately paid a higher price in the loss of our land, destruction of irreplaceable limestone and forest that sits atop of it, and their invaluable ecosystems, the loss of native species, the loss of culturally significant space. Past projects have shown the risk of weak oversight, including land misuse, revenues unaccounted for, and communities left with little to show. This bill gives vague assurances, but no new mechanisms prevent the history of repeating itself. Testimony raises important concerns about community impact. Nearby residents will bear the brunt of blasting, dust, contamination, noise, traffic. And these are not minor inconveniences. They are daily quality of life and extremely concerning public health issues. But let's not ignore the bigger picture. This approach treats limestone as a finite and non-renewable resource as disposable. Once quarried, the forest, the ecosystem, the cultural value tied to land are forever gone. As other island nations learn, including Nauru, short-term extraction often leaves a legacy of loss and poverty. The bill also gives a deadline of six years. Six- Six years to excavate, but I estimate, 3 million cubic yards of limestone. And that's not all because soil and other things are not accounted for. Six years. Is that going to benefit the Chamorland Trust beneficiaries? I highly not. Because what's happening is a buildup which has concentrated all, most of the labor force. So all of this aggregate will go more, more likely to the military buildup, leaving our own beneficiaries without the resource on a scarred land. To characterize this area as invaluable is highly disingenuous. This is beautiful land that we need to protect, culturally significant land. We should have developed a moratorium on mining this non-renewable resource. And we need to prioritize the beneficiaries of Chamorland Trust. So that when they are ready to build the homes, they get the resource. But again, I oppose this bill because of the irreversible impacts. Sidoz Masi.
Sidoz Masi. Colleagues, we're going to go and take recess for the day, and then we'll be coming back, come back in at 9:00 AM tomorrow morning, okay? Come back in at 9:00 AM tomorrow morning. Stand in recess.